Okay, I'm sure it's 6:15 somewhere. At this time, we'll call the regular meeting of the Perry Municipal Authority together for April 15, 2013. Roll call, please.
Strowler.
Here.
Dement.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Here. A Duke, declare a quorum present at this time. I'd like to ask Reverend Gerald Stewart if he would come to the podium and lead us in our opening prayer.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we are very grateful to you for the love and care that you have shown to each one of us. We thank you for this time that we can spend in decision-making that are things that pertain to our community in which we live. We pray for the council and all those decisions that are being made and that it will be just those things that will be good and purposeful for our lives here. Father, we thank you for our country in which we live. We thank you for all those servicemen who are in service, women who are protecting us. We pray for our community and the police department, the sheriff's department, the fire department, all of those who help to protect us and keep us safe. Father, at this time, we pray for Boston and for all of those families that were disrupted today because of this terrorist attack. Pray for those who were seriously injured. Pray for those whose families have been disrupted because of deaths in those families. And Father, we pray for hearts that they might be changed in some way towards you and be more perfect in your sight. Again, we pray for our country and for this community. Ask your blessings upon us in all ways that we might be able to serve you better. It's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move to item number one, the consent agenda. Items wishing to be removed, we'll take those.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Shelby.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. We have motion second to approve the consent agenda. Will be discussion, questions, comments. Vote, please.
Strowler.
Yes.
Dement.
Yes.
Duke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now, comments from those assembled. Item number four, anybody wish to make comments not on our PMA agenda? We'll take those from you. Comments from those assembled? Comments from those assembled. Seeing none, we'll move to item number six, new business. Any new business needs to come before the PMA? Seeing none, do we have a couple?
Motion to adjourn.
Would you like to make the last motion? I thought we might.
Second.
We have, no, 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 no. We have a motion of second, motion by Marvin, a second by Shelby, to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Strowler.
Yes.
Dement.
Yes.
Duke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. I had a feeling that was coming. All right, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the city council for the city of Perry. It's April 15, 2013, in case you didn't know already. Roll call, please.
Strowler.
Here.
Dement.
Yes.
Duke.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Paul.
Here. We do have a quorum present at this time. I would like to welcome inside the horseshoe area for good luck. We will administer the oath of office as a result of the new vote that came out. We will install officers for post two for wards one, two, three, and four with Gordon Johnson, Tim Moxley, Darren Webb, and Bill Strowler. Join me, please. Right inside the horseshoe, that's where all the luck is. At this time, I'd ask you to raise your right hand, repeat after me. I and state your name.
I, George Strowler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or any other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As council member.
As council member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Congratulations. You can take your seats and Marvin and Shelby, this is kind of slick the way we did this. You had very well taped.
No, flip up the bottom.
There we go. Your nameplate that you can take with you.
Thank you.
And I also want to make a little quick presentation before you sneak out.
And come to the middle.
Yep, we'll come to the middle. All right, is everybody is well aware that's here tonight, I'm not much on speeches.
Never has been.
So I'll try to pull one together. For obvious reasons that are known to most people in this community, I, before these two served on the Perry City Council, I did not have a very close relationship. But I want you to know that it's been a true pleasure and honor to serve with both of you. I think that this community was well-served. Your votes and comments and questions through the years have been 100% driven behind what is in the best interest of this community. And you all are to be commended on your service. As most of us know that sit around this table, it's not always an easy task. It's a commitment, and you all performed it well. And so the least that we can do is make this presentation, one to you, Ms. Duke, and one to you, Mr. Dement, that says, "The Perry City Councils and members of the Perry Municipal Authority, where you served as Ward Two Post Two and Ward Three Post Two, in recognition and sincere appreciation of your dedicated service along with the dates in which you served, with gratitude from the mayor, city council members, and the citizens of Perry, Oklahoma." Congratulations on a job well done. All right. Thank you all so much.
Can I go to the back?
You can go to the back. Okay. I'd like to welcome Tim and Darren. Glad you're here. For those that are present tonight and watching on television, you should know that just a few days ago, Mary conducted a very nice session to get acquainted and to bring our new council members up to speed. I was able to attend at your invitation. I'm grateful for that. I think it was a good process and something we should consider keeping on as new council members, you know, join us. The elections went well, and you held up great honor in the community, as did your opponents. Gordon, congratulations on your old seat being retained.
Thank you, sir.
And Bill, yours too. Congratulations to all of you. I think we have a wonderful council now on both sides of the table. Not that we didn't before. We had a great council before. But we are ready to conduct the business for the city of Perry at this time. We have new sitting of officers, and I'd ask for a new roll call, please.
Strowler.
Yes.
Webb.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Present.
Warner.
Here.
Paul.
Here. We do have a quorum present at this time. We'll move to item number four, the consent agenda. Items wishing to be removed, the consent agenda, and we'll take those from you at this time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. As presented, will be discussion, questions, and comments. Seeing none, votes, order, roll call, please.
Strowler.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Here. Now, we move to item number seven, comments from those assembled. Anybody wish to make comments not on our city council agenda? We'll take those from you. Comments from those assembled? Comments from those assembled? Comments from those assembled? Now, item number eight, proclamations, commendations, reports, inquiries of the governing body. Proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries. Seeing none, we'll move to item number nine, the city manager's report. Mary?
A few months ago, the council approved the city's participation in the pictometry project with the county, and that project is now up and running. Training was held last week, and it's a digital imaging process and software program, and it captures aerial imagery from multiple locations, so it's not just a, you know, straight-down view. You can see things from all sorts of angles, and I don't want to get into a lot of detail because it can do so much, I could go on and on. Many applications that this will be useful for, and you'll be seeing, you know, some of our reports and handouts that we'll be utilizing that technology. And so several of us were trained on that, and as in any training on something new, it takes you a little while to catch on, and you really need to keep working at it because if you train and then you don't use it, anyway. But a big thank you to the county for taking the lead on this, and especially to Mandy Snyder in the assessor's office.
Is this available on their website?
It is internet. It's available through the internet, so.
Okay. Thank you.
But we have to have a password to get on, so.
Okay.
But, you know, it is available. Railroad crossing signal project. We were notified that an application's been submitted to the Oklahoma Corporation Commission by the railroad and ODOT to install cantilever-mounted flashing light signals with gate arms and additional lights at the crossing on Highway 77 there near the YMCA. It's estimated to cost $405,000-plus and will be funded 90% of federal aid, railroad and highway crossing funds, and matching 10% state funds for signal installation costs. There's a hearing on April 24th before a corporation commission hearing officer, so I assume if all that goes well, then that project will move on through the process. I don't have any timeframe for any of this, but obviously, it's a safety situation where it's, you know, a lot of vehicles crossing there and there are no arms or lights. That's the good news about the railroad. Bad news is, you know, we all know that we have trains going through town night and day, many, many trains, more than the average community. And so recently, when all of our crossings were blocked, it became more than just a little inconvenience because they were blocked for over an hour. And so it really brought to our attention that the safety of our community is really at peril, you know, because the ambulance and police can't respond unless they go way out of the way, and that delays our response time. So I've been compiling information, statements from the fire chief, police chief, citizens. Shelby emailed me, I've included that, you know, just numerous things. There was a person who shared with me her experience because she was needing to get to a meeting, wasn't able to get there. She tried every which way to get around, and she was blocked. So, you know, those personal experiences, you know, I think are helpful, so that will be pulled together and probably nailed in the next couple of days. So the corporation commission is the agency that oversees railroads within the state, and so that complaint will go to them. On their webpage, if individuals want to file a complaint, they have it available. You know, you can submit it online. We have copies of that complaint form available at our front desk at City Hall, so if anyone wants to come in and just fill it out, there is a mailing address to send it in. I'd just like to have a person who is our liaison with the railroad. That's really all, you know, if I could just accomplish that, I think I'd be doing something because really, you cannot get a hold of anybody that you ever hear back from. They're kind of sympathetic when you call, but you never hear from them again. And so if I could just get one person I could rely on to be our point person for Perry, that would be a success for me. So anyway, that's my.
Has anyone said why that train blocked it?
I haven't heard anything official. Nothing official. They were assuming they were switching and had problems with, you know, switching, so we don't know. I've not been notified in life.
It sure feels like it's the standstill here lately has been not just, I don't know, about an hour. When you're sitting in the car, it feels like an hour.
Right.
But it sure seems like there's been a lot more.
Well, the train traffic, last count, I knew official, was 54 trains a day, and I've heard it's increased to 48 now.
Or 72.
72.
That may feel like.
Every day.
Well, I think the, you know, with the detour, I mean, that really adds to the problem because the, you know, the traffic backs up way farther than it would otherwise with the firm crossing, you know, virtually closed. I mean, you can use the crossing, but you can't get very far, so anyway. So anyway, we're going to work on that. A couple of things about the library. On Thursday, this coming Thursday, the Perry Progress Club benefit.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. So you're right.
It says red thing.
But it says Thursday online, so.
It says Thursday.
I've gotten to the point where my fingers and my brain don't work together, so sometimes I think things that don't actually show up on the sheet, so. And I noticed a couple of those farther down the road. Anyway, Wednesday, the 17th, Perry Progress Club benefit coffee at the library. We sincerely appreciate the support of the Progress Club and hope that there will be a good turnout. Like to see all of the ones around the horseshoe there, if possible. That'd be nice. Also, the Friends of the Library used book sale started today. New location, it's at the Armory, and it goes through Friday, so I haven't been there yet, but I'm assuming that they have lots and lots of books. Haven't run out. Is that right?
Nine thirty. No, no.
Okay.
Not enough tables to put them on.
Yes.
So we're running out of tables before we run out of books.
Yeah.
9:30 to 5:00 are the hours.
The Friends of the Library reorganized recently, and so we certainly do appreciate all that they do to help promote the library and help get books out into the community so that nobody has a reason that, you know, they don't have books, so. Also, the spring election was held recently in addition to the two new council members. Just like to thank the community for supporting the hotel tax increase and also the charter change on residency. We always would like to see more voter turnout, but it was kind of a crummy weather day if I remember right, but anyway, it's, you know, good that the voters turned out, the ones that did, and supported all of the things that were on the ballot and brought us two new council members, and so we appreciate that. And a special thank you to Marvin and Shelby for serving. I know the average person has no idea how much time it takes, you know, in addition to just the time that we're sitting around this horseshoe, there's just lots and lots of hours that go into this that, you know, people probably, you know, would be very surprised, and so we thank everybody for stepping up, Tim and Darren, thank you for stepping up and willing to commit your time and effort and energy to the community. And that's all I have.
Questions or comments for the city management? Questions, comments? All right, we'll move to item number 10, the chief financial officer's report. Russ, it's nice to have you in the house considering this is, I talk about it a lot, this is your Super Bowl day.
Super Bowl today, I was going to say happy tax day to everyone. If you have not filed your taxes, at least make sure you file an extension. That's all I'm going to say. Public service announcement for the city of Perry. If you didn't file today, at least file the extension even if you think you're going to owe. It's better to have the extension on file than it is to pay the extra coverage, so. Get out, file your taxes, or go see your CPA, or tax preparer here in town, and get those things taken care of.
Bill's on the hook.
Phone's now ringing off the hook. What form is that? How do I do that? So anyhow, no, it is, it's nice to have the new councilman on board. I'm sure over the next few weeks, we'll have plenty of questions and things wanting to know related to finances, and sit down, we'll get together and answer those questions and see where you guys are. For the rest of you guys, back to the old hat, we're going to hit just a few of the high topics and kind of go. Our cash overall is down for the month, but based on the payments that we had going out for capital projects, not surprising, so we kind of expected that. We are about ready to hit another one of our busy seasons. Mother Nature has done us a little bit of a favor in sending some rain our way, but she still hasn't sent us enough, so we will start seeing everybody like laying out, watering this grass, and getting things ready to go. And so we're into that growing season, time to plant, time to water, and so we will see those revenues bumping back up, you know. At the rate that Mother Nature can't make up her mind, one day it's 85, the next day we have sleet and snow on the ground. We just have to kind of enjoy it and thank you for being in Oklahoma. But that is good for us from the utility standpoint in that we get those fluctuations and people are running their electricity, you know, to keep that going, so we always want that, and that is good news for us. If you look at your budget versus actuals, guys, since we adopted budget amendments last meeting, if one of these numbers was drastically skewed at this point, you guys might shoot me, so I can luckily report to you that we're in line with all of our estimates, especially just being one month out. But honestly, the more important piece that I think we have to at least start talking about is once we start this fourth quarter of our fiscal year, we really start looking at next year's budget. You know, we've been talking about that, and I've already worked through, you know, a preliminary operational draft, you know, with Mary getting her up to speed, so really, guys, that's what we're going to be talking about over the next few weeks and the next few meetings that we go through, because it is, I know the time you guys hate the most out of the entire year, but it is budget time, and so it's going to be time that we start hitting that and getting things back in line there. If you look at that budget versus actual, you know, we will hit our sales tax, you know, we'll hit 100% of our sales tax number next month, which is really almost a month ahead of where I anticipated that we would be, so we are seeing growth in our sales tax, which is good for us. We like to see that number keep on building up. On down, if you look at our economic development, our hotel motel tax was back down in what is kind of deemed a normal range this month. Betty, it's nothing significant as far as that goes, but we do have, we are getting the rest of our payout on some back hotel motel tax agreement that was made, and so we have that in place, which is good news for us, so hopefully we'll continue to see that growth, and, you know, we do what the citizens do, we are being good stewards of the tax that they voted in place, and we are watching that and going, looking at those revenue productions to make sure that we're getting the money that is due us. Technology didn't close. Other than that, within the general fund, nothing that really jumps up and down. If you look on down under the PMA and those activities, you'll see that pretty much everything is in line, you know, the water keeps being a little higher than our 75% of budget right now. It's really because of some capital project improvements that we were doing and some repair parts, nothing directly related to operating expenses, and we will see those fall back in line by the time we finish the end of fiscal year. All in all, you know, we're looking good, having a good year so far, and I don't see anything on the near horizon as we finish out this fiscal year that's really going to jump up and bother us. Do you guys have any questions?
You have the Delta Brown and the public access, there's nothing in it. Is that correct, or do we still have those?
No, we still have those. Delta Brown, all of it's rolling up, if you look in the top line, we also had, we had two of those Delta Browns, but all of it is in the top line now.
About public access?
The public access is being used to fund the pen part, so that is why it is not showing any cash. The dollars that are coming out are going in to fund the pen part, and so they're rolling over there.
And how much does that amount? Is it by the month, or how does it?
We get it once a year.
Once a year.
It's about our $42,000 to $45,000 year in and year out, when we see that.
Other questions or comments, Russ? Questions or comments? All right, Russ, thank you for the report. This time, we'll move to item number 11, which is receiving presentation on information regarding the Community Health Needs Assessment Program for Perry and Noble County. We have with us tonight the new CEO of Perry Memorial Hospital, Dean Turner, to make the presentation. Dean?
Thank you, Mayor.
Nice to have you back.
Thank you very much. You all should have on the table in front of you a copy of the survey that will begin being distributed tomorrow, along with a list of a series of four meetings we'll be using to conduct the Community Health Needs Assessment. There are two reasons we're approaching this at this time. First, we are in the process with the hospital of working on a strategic plan that probably won't be completed until early, late June or early July, but in the process, we looked at a Community Health Needs Assessment. In the past, the hospital has worked with what's called Colorado Rural Health Works, which is a collaborative effort of the Oklahoma Office of Rural Health and the OSU Extension Services. In the past, they've done bits and pieces of this for us, as well as maybe some work for the city in getting some demographic information. They helped us a couple of years ago put together a available health services within Noble County and the northeast region of the state. So the hospital had an incentive, we wanted to get this done so we could really get a better understanding what our needs were. In the process, though, through the Affordable Care Act, it was enacted that all community hospitals were required to do a Community Health Needs Assessment, or they would suffer a, quote, excise tax penalty. Fortunately for us, because we are a subdivision of the city, that didn't necessarily apply to us, but the structure that they put into place made a lot of sense to use, so we're going to follow their guidelines that they've set out, which of course, at this point, if you read the paper today, requires every three years that a Community Health Needs Assessment is enacted to go back out and see if anything has changed, and that we look at stakeholders within the community that have a significant interest on the health services provided. That includes not just the hospitals, but the health department, the fire department, those services, seniors within the community, anyone who would have a specific interest. I've kind of broadened that a little bit, too, because I've asked all the ministers in town to participate, feeling that they really know what goes on within their congregations. They after all make hospital visits and keep track of what's going on there to help us put some of that information together. And then to combine the information then into an action plan that we can utilize and say, "This is what we're going to do." Now, under the Affordable Care Act, that requires within your abilities, and so I always caption that in saying, "It's only within what we're capable to do." As you well know, people have often grand ideas of how you can solve things, but it's well beyond the capabilities of a hospital or small community to make those things happen. So we're beginning this process tomorrow on April 16th at 12 o'clock. There'll be a meeting at the hospital. We structured them to be at the hospital. We'll provide a meal so people can come in during their noon hour, participate, both receive information, and provide some feedback. The initial meeting will explain a little bit to all of you to participate, what this is about. We've sent letters out, as I've said, to a number, and I know to all of the council, except probably the two new council members, had not yet received a letter explaining this. the pharmacies, any organization that provides health services within the community. And from what I've seen in other counties and communities, that can be very significant. I think it's important, particularly as you go into economic development, to have a good idea of what these services bring to the community. The second meeting, which will be on May 15th, they'll present to us a physician, or a primary care physician demand analysis, basically looking at the mix of individuals by age, by sex, within the community, and then looking at the primary care services that are provided here, and saying, what do you really need? And I look at that as being a valuable tool for the planning of the hospital, as we look at what should be the appropriate mix of healthcare providers for us. So I think that's gonna be a very good presentation on May 15th. And I'll step back just a second. As I mentioned, you have the survey. That'll kick off tomorrow. It'll end on May 10th. We're soliciting through mailouts, through the hospital, they can be picked up there. We're also on the website at the hospital, and through the Chamber of Commerce here in Perry, that they can go online. You can take it online electronically, you can fill it out on paper form if you prefer, and send it back. Oklahoma Rural Health Works has gone to doing it this way instead of using telephone calling, for two reasons. Many of us have moved to cell phones, and there are no landlines. And the times they normally call, they only get the older population in the communities, rather than get a broader, a much broader spectrum of cross-section of the community. So we're trying it a little different. That's their recommendation, and they found that to be very successful. And then on the 4th of June, we'll meet again. They'll present more summaries from the surveys, begin looking at health indicators within the community, where are there some specific needs, feed that back off of the participants, and begin developing then key areas we need to work on. And finally, on June 19th, working with the community group, really that's formed as a steering committee, to help define what are some of the key commitments, or areas that we need to work on in developing a community action plan. That'll then go to the hospital board at their June board meeting to be adopted or challenged, and for us to then begin working on into a much fuller action plan. The intent is this may be some services we have to break out over a period of time, and it can be broken into a section, and then redo the whole process again in about three years, to really see, what have we done? Have we made progress? What do we need to do? And so my intent then is, as we get it approved by the board, to also bring that back here to the council and to the county, and share that report with you. The report itself, when it is finalized, will be both on the hospital's website, it'll be on the website for Oklahoma Rural Health Works, as well as paper copies at the hospital if someone would like to have it. Happy to answer any questions regarding this.
Questions from Mr. Turner? Well, we certainly thank you for coming in, and I think the Health Needs Assessment is something good, and the way you've gone about trying to involve the community is certainly appreciated. You know, for maybe our newer council members that, you know, that aren't aware, and for those watching at home, you know, the hospital is a valued asset to Perry, to the citizens of Perry, but also to this body, as, you know, as we receive benefits from that directly. So thank you again for your efforts, and encourage everybody to turn out, to those that are interested to be a part of the Health Needs Assessment, beginning tomorrow, isn't it?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I need to leave. You're excused.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll move to item number 12, which is direct to city manager to send a letter to the NRCS expressing desire to proceed with detailed design of the Upper Black Bear Creek Site 62. Back in February of 2012, we did approve the Upper Black Bear Creek Watershed Supplement and Watershed Agreement Number 7, really kind of identified the steps that need to be taken as we look at a potential rehabilitation of that. For the new council members, just to give you a little bit of history, we're talking specifically about Perry Lake, is another way to, another way to put that. The NRCS kind of let us know of some concerns that they had with the need for some potential rehabilitation, and the potential for a breach as it relates to inefficiencies in the dam. And so we had a, we had a council meeting, and a lot of the public showed up that evening in case you didn't, you didn't turn in, as we discussed what rehabilitation would be like. One of the big things about that, of course, would be to redo the dam and increase the size of that dam, which would increase the surface area of the lake. And so if you're a property owner out there, you obviously have concerns about that, that it would, could potentially intrude on your properties. We had those property owners here, and they were, they were concerned about that. I think a lot of the perception was that this was a train that was moving really fast and was something that was gonna happen. I think we were able to calm a lot of those by making several declarations. By the way, we have with us tonight from NRCS, Bill Porter. Bill, if I go, if I go off track in any form, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to correct me. I'm just gonna give, give a little background, though, to our new members. So they felt, they felt like maybe this was a train that was moving awfully fast, and they weren't gonna have, you know, a whole lot of input. I've got to tell you that a couple of things made him feel better, I think, and there, and you'll recognize this in the action that we're looking at this evening, too, and what Bill is looking for. First of all, by the time that we recognize and identify a problem, which we have, which is pretty much step one. Step two, then, would be to look at some, to some engineering, get some engineering done and some studies, and try to apply a price tag to what the changes would be. This process is estimated to take somewhere between two and four years for the time that we authorize it. The next thing is, is that it would come with no cost to the City of Perry, that the NRCS, through their funding sources with the state and the federal government, would cover those, would cover those costs. So then, when we were complete with that, we would have a plan, both the NRCS and the City of Perry, on the shelf of a complete engineering study of what it would take to solidify and strengthen, you know, the potential for the breach. And then, this is probably the safeguard of all safeguards, that even if you've done those two steps, we've completed step one, if we go to phase two, even if we've completed phase two, going to phase three, which is the active construction or rebuild of the facility, is determined by two things. One is the funding made available by the, by the federal government, the state of Oklahoma to the NRCS, and the funding made available by the City of Perry. Both those things have to run concurrent before any action can be taken. Now, obviously, if it goes to phase three, you're gonna see a lot of serious budget issues come in front of this, in front of this body, because it's estimated, without seeing a report, that potentially our exposure to this could be as high as a couple of million dollars. And then, of course, NRCS's exposure and expense would be dramatically more than that. And so there would be a lot of comment by this body around, about with certain Russ and his group would be involved, the general public would be involved, there would be yet more public meetings that would take place. The reason that I wanted to go through this process is we look to what we're asking this evening, which is to allow Mary to send a letter authorizing the NRCS to go ahead and conduct their engineering study, which, in repeating, would be at no cost to the City of Perry. It's anticipated to take somewhere in the neighborhood between two and four years, and in no way, and we have Bill here to confer on this, but in no way commits this city to making the expenditure of dollars to even begin, to be able, to begin the project. If this takes two to four years to develop, it could potentially take another two or three years to find the funding on one or both sides of this, and yet another year or two to implement actually how the, you know, how the facility would be, would be constructed, and the timelines associated with that. So realistically, you know, I don't know how long most of us are playing on serving around this table, but realistically, it's fair to say that we're five to seven years away from even being in the position to be able to start, you know, rehabilitation. Now, is it a serious issue? In the beginning, I didn't think it was, quite frankly. I didn't see that it to be a very big issue. That lake, or pond, or puddle now, as many have referred to it, doesn't seem to be that big of a concern or an issue with the drought stages that we've been through. I can tell you, though, that I am now convinced that we do have structural concerns with the dam. I can tell you that I am now convinced more than ever that downstream, the downstream portion of that, the backside of the dam and everything behind it, could potentially, if, if, if a series of unfortunate events happened, you know, could be put at risk. Coincidentally, if you can't map that out in your mind, the downstream portion of Perry Lake is all of the City of Perry, for the most part. It's mainly in the downtown area, and it would expand out around the City of Perry, but a breach of that dam at full capacity would, would and could potentially wipe out downtown Perry. So that becomes a very serious issue and a concern that we should have as council, and we should have a desire to have, take, to the extent we can, all available resources, and at least get an engineering study done, so that if we have continued erosion, or continued breaches, or possible failures, you know, that we have a plan in place and we're not having to wait two or four years to make a decision whether or not we want to shore that thing up. So that's my brief outline of what brought us here today. I want to reiterate that, that there are concerns by property owners out there, and justify it. You know, a rebuild of that nature would potentially intrude and require us potentially to acquire properties and relocate some that have been out there for an extended period of time, and they have a right to be concerned and want to know about this timeline. When we passed the first stage of this in February, I felt like everybody left relatively comfortable, if for no other reason than no formal decisions have been made. There's no expense to the City of Perry at this point. And then we're looking at years, literally years, before anything can put in place to be able to address this from a fiscal and physical standpoint. Bill, with that, I'll turn it over to you and let you fill in the gaps. I'd ask that you go to the podium, just because it's easy on our TV guy.
Thank you.
And you've got such a handsome face, we want everybody to see.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Just like you said, it's a process. It's something that just doesn't happen overnight, and you have to take it one step at a time. And the next step is that detailed design. And in the state, so far, we've done 29 of these rehabilitation projects. We've done two for other cities, the City of Stillwell and the City of Colgate, and they're facing a lot of the issues that you're facing right now. But there is other alternative sources of funding when you get to that point, but you're not, you know, like we talked about here, you're not to that point yet. It's down the line, you know, two to four years, possibly longer, it just depends on how things go. But that's kind of where we're at right now. We're ready to start the geological investigation and do a detailed design, and we just want to make sure we're all on the same page before we start, so.
If you have any questions? Questions or comments of Bill? I think we laid it out pretty clearly, but there may be some questions or concerns. What we're asking for tonight, again, repeating, is authorization for the city manager to sign the letter expressing our desire for the NRCS to prepare with their, to begin their design phase of Black Bear Creek Site Number 62.
Those other facilities you said you...
Betty.
I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. We've got a motion. Bill will continue to take questions.
Those other places you said that you are rehabilitating, were they the same, about the same size as ours, or are they bigger or smaller?
Say, one of them was larger. The City of Colgate had a very large dam, and it was 5.1 million, that's all said and done. And the numbers we've been throwing around here and our plan and all is very preliminary. You know, we've gotta get some more detailed design information off before we can tie those numbers down. But Stillwell was about 4.4 million, and Colgate was 5.1 million, and both of those large dams.
Additional questions? We do have a motion from Betty, and a second now from Gordon. Additional questions or comments before I move to a vote? Concerns? Votes in order, roll call please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Bill. Appreciate your coming. We'll move on now to item number three, which is consider approval of ordinance Number 2013-08, amending Chapter 12 of Perry Municipal Code by amendment of Section 12, 231, to be entitled Commercial and Public Parking Standards for New Construction, and providing for a new Section 12, 232, entitled Residential Parking Area Construction Requirements. Also looking for emergency on this. Council members, if you'll remember, by the way, before we go any further, and before I go into detail, Bryce, we're asking for approval of the ordinance, but we approved the ordinance prior to the community meeting?
No.
Okay, I thought this might have been a...
Yeah, yeah, what we're actually asking for is down under the recommendation...
For the public hearing.
That we call a public hearing.
Okay, so we're actually just considering this ordinance and taking your questions. This is a repeat from our last meeting, where it was brought on the agenda, and the council had several questions and concerns. We have since, at least feel like that staff has addressed those, and have actually put this in ordinance form, which you'll soon be, become accustomed to if you haven't seen it already. So we're not actually acting for approval of the ordinance at this time, we're asking for the ability to take this to public hearing, and then you'll be asked to, to make ruling on the ordinance. Questions or comments? Do you see that your concerns have been addressed from our last meeting?
I make a motion that we have a public hearing for the approval of ordinance 2013-08.
Second. We have a motion second for, to approve the public hearing to be placed on, I guess it'd be the next agenda.
With the planning commission.
With the planning commission, okay.
Yes.
For ordinance 2013-08. Questions or comments before we move to the vote? Everybody understand what you're voting on? Roll call please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now, we move to item number 14, which is consider approval of ordinance 2013-09, amending Chapter 7 of Perry Municipal Code by amendment of Section 7, 111, providing for compliance with the Public Competitive Bid Act, along with saving severability repeater and penalty and declaring emergency. Bryce, I'm assuming you're gonna tell us this brings us in line with the State Public Competing Act?
And that's what it does. It eliminated some of the language, which, which was quite frankly confusing, and if it's under $5,000 and it concerns a public construction contract, you don't have to take bids. Between 5 and 50 now, you have to take written and/or oral quotes, and over 50, you have to go through the whole process. And then that's 20-day notice, bids, notice, and the like, and so that's, it just makes our ordinance consistent with state law.
Questions, comments?
I have a question.
Fire.
This is actually about our previous, did you mention that we had to do an emergency on the previous?
No, we, what we, no, I was clarifying, thank you for that. I was clarifying that the only action we were seeking was to declare the public hearing.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for that. Questions or comments on item number 14, the ordinance 2013-09, bringing in to same standards the State Municipal Code, Public Bidding Act?
Was our code a little bit different than this, I'm assuming, Bryce?
It was, it was last year's, they just made this change. So it was the way that the state law was written in 2012, and then it got amended as of November 1st, 2012, and it's, it's just been now that I've, I don't think we've bid anything, but I recognize that it wasn't right, and then brought that and the next item up to, up to speed.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion second to approve ordinance 2013-09. Questions, comments, concerns? Roll call please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Questions, comments, concerns? Roll call, please.
Stronger.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now, we move to item number 15, consider amendments to Section 2 of the FERC's manual, Bryce.
This does the same thing.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Don't let him talk anymore. You guys still want to read?
It does, I'll tell you what else it does. It does do one other thing. The special rule for public trust that you see here on the last page, wasn't in our public competitive, or wasn't in our manual, and that is, and we've always said that, if it's over 50,000, and you're even buying a widget through your public authority, you have to do this two-week ad. And that, actually, the way it was, the old manual, it exempted the public authority, so you didn't have to have this language in there. But the last time we did it, we included the public authority, and we didn't include this provision. So, you know, now we need to stick it in. Nothing's changed on this last, on this last page. I mean, that is the law and has been the law, but now we're sticking that into our, into our manual, so that everyone knows.
We do have a motion, a second, and there'll be additional comments or questions, concerns. Seeing that, we'll move to a vote.
Stronger.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now, at this time, we'll move to item number 16, asking that we stand convened in a public hearing on the application of the City of Perry, Oklahoma Department of Commerce, for a community development block grant to improve the city's water, wastewater system. Project is intended to benefit low, moderate income level citizens. We are convening in a public hearing at this time. We will give a little bit of background, and we'll allow the public to make comments or questions. The, we are, it is CDBG grant time again. We have identified an area of our community that is in dire need of improvement. You can see that the grant award that we're seeking is $350,000. Mary, at this time, I'll let you give any additional details.
The maximum that you can request is 350,000, so we're, we have needs beyond that, obviously, but that's the amount that we're requesting. I understand that this grant application has been submitted once, twice before, exactly two times before, and was not successful, so we're hoping that we will be successful this time. The update on the engineer's estimate was six, close to 650,000. So obviously, that's a lot of money in addition to the 350 that the city would need to come up with. So the project scope that was identified in the previous grant applications, there was a section of that that was, needed attention sooner. We couldn't wait. So you should have at your, at your chairs, you should have a map that shows, that looks like this. And so, basically, you can see, there's the section where the project's been completed with refunding, and then the, so that leaves, you know, the north section, the, and it's a little bit in sections here, but to bring the cost estimate down to a more reasonable amount that what, that would fit in with the 350,000 grant, and then it would require leveraging on the City of Perry of 100,000, so the hatched area is what we're showing to be the recommended project scope. That was in consultation with our street and water superintendent, so that we, you know, get the one, get the area fixed that needs it the most, and has had the, had the most problems. Not to say that the other doesn't need it, but to fit within the funding availability, that's what we're looking at. And so, at this point, we're looking at, I'll just turn it back to the mayor for the public hearing portion.
Okay, thank you. You all, in public now, have heard the updated engineer's estimate. At the conclusion of the public hearing, we'll be, council will be asked to authorize the mayor to sign the CDBG grant application, along with approving the citizens' participation plan. At this time, we are in public, in a, in a public hearing, giving the public, the general public, an opportunity to speak on the CDBG grant application.
Can some of that work be done in kind? Some of the, some of the work that's going to be done on that project?
The grant administration.
Can it be done in kind, in place of the money?
Grant administration will be in kind. We're doing that in-house, and we're not utilizing the services of NODO like we've done in the past. So that was, you know, that's an in kind.
Yeah, but are, is there any way that our city departments can do any of the work if the grant is approved?
That, that I do not know. But usually, on a situation like this, you would, you'd put together a bid package and utilize, you know, a contractor to do the work.
But I know we have done work in kind before on some projects.
Yeah, what we're doing is we're authorizing, if the council approves this, the application and the expenditure of up to $150,000 of our local money. And so that, and so that's what you're doing. If we can work out some in kind at the end, or if the bids come in low, and so we don't have to use $150,000, or we could dig the hole, I mean, if we could do that, that'd be great, okay? But if you approve this, you're saying, you know, that you'll put up the $150,000 to match this. And that, of course, gets points, the leverage gets points. The place where we don't get points is we don't have a, we're not under a consent order. And that's why we haven't gotten it the last two times, but we might not get it this time. But, but this is the funding cycle, and we think we need to file.
It certainly makes sense to try to parlay 150,000 to an additional 350,000. Other additional comments or questions from the public? Other questions or comments? I'm going to adjourn the public meeting. Other questions and comments?
We should go ahead.
Okay. Or concerns? Okay, we'll go ahead then, and adjourn the public hearing on the application of the City of Perry to the Department of Commerce for the CDBG grant. At this time, I'd turn to the, to the council, now that we're back in our session, and see what you'd like to do with authorizing, authorizing me to...
Make a motion while the mayor signs the CDBG application.
And the citizens', and approve the citizens' participation plan, or did you want to do that in separate motions?
Together.
Do that in both? We have a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign and to approve the citizens' participation plan. Will there be discussion? Discussion, questions, comments? Now, Bill, please.
Stronger.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Okay, now we move to item number 17, which is consider approval of resolution 2013-05, certifying the amount of local leverage to be used if the city receives the CDBG grant for wastewater system improvements. As Mary already told you, if you approve this resolution, you're authorizing the match from the PMA Capital Projects Fund 2013 of 150,000, should we be approved for the 350,000 dollar award.
The project estimate is 504,144.
So 154,000.
Yeah, 154.
154,000.
144,050.
Thank you for the correction. Everybody know the new number? Move approved resolution 2013-05?
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve the resolution. Will there be discussion, questions?
Now, if we approve this, can we, and let's say we get it, can we then go and get in kind, or we can, can we negotiate them for in kind, do you think?
Well, we would, we would put it out for bid. Now, we could put it out for bid in any number of different ways, and we could put it out for bid with the hole already being dug. We could, if we wanted to, I don't know how much that would save us, okay? But, you know, we could put it out in a different way. The only thing that they're concerned with is that the project get done, and that it doesn't expend more than 350,000. So I suppose we could be innovative, but in most instances, you just put it out the bid, and, and you see what the bids come back.
In the past budgets, we have been setting aside between 150 and 250,000 a year to do sewer projects. So as we go back into this year, we're not going to see, it's going to kind of be the same situation. Last year, we made the same application, set aside 187,000, I think, was what we set aside last year as a match number. So this will come back in our, in our budget meetings, and in those discussions also, as to, as to how we expend those capital dollars. So it's, it's not like we don't have these dollars contemplated already in our budget. If, if we get down the road and we determine that, yes, there are some things that we can do to save money, for sure, we're going to do that. But getting, as far as this application goes, the total engineered project says that it's 504,000. We have to be able to show in our review application that we have the capacity to pay the 504,000. We're going to use 350 of CDBG money, the remaining amount, they're saying, do you, do you have the ability today to do that? And by this resolution, we're saying, yes, we have the ability to do it. If it has to be 100% cash, we've got the 100% cash to make it.
Yeah, and the only other comment I would make is to, is for you to, to keep in mind, this is, in effect, a new construction project. You know, our crews, Ty, as you're well aware, you know, have daily, have daily duties and responsibilities. So this will be a bidded out, a new construction project that, you know, the contractors will make bid on. And again, as Bryce said, there may be a situation where we can do some early prep and cut down on, on what that would be, but it would be consistent with whatever Mary's findings are, coordinating with the department heads as to what their daily duties are during that time, should we win the award. So we have to be mindful of that, too. It'd be nice to be able to peel all of our staff off to work on this and save us, save us some money, including the match. They have duties, daily duties that they have to perform, and this is a new project that we're stacking on top of. So we'll be guarded in that, and I would suspect that where we can, we'll do in kind, but I don't think we should sugarcoat it and think that there'll be a lot of in kind benefit to the application, okay? Did we, we have a motion, a second?
Yep.
Thought we did. Additional questions or comments? Give everybody time? Okay, let's move to a vote.
Stronger.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now, we move to item number 18, any new business needs to come before the, new business? New business. Seeing that, we'll move to item number 20, which is consider convening to executive session for the following purposes: Consider the reappointment of the municipal judge, chair, and board, as authorized under 25OS 307B.1, and to confer on matters pertaining to economic development at the Perry Industrial Park and the Perry Commercial Park, including the purchase or appraisal of certain right-of-ways at such parks and in other locations west of Interstate 35 for economic development purposes, as public disclosure would interfere with the development implementation of such economic development purposes. For those of you that are gauging whether or not you want to tune back in, I do anticipate some, some sort of action on the municipal judge, and I don't anticipate any action on the economic development, it's for information-only purposes. So move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to convene into executive session. Roll call, please.
Stronger.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Okay, I didn't take a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to reconvene. Roll call, please.
Here. Okay, Stronger. Webb.
Here.
Moxley.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Here.
Paul.
Yes. Is there any action that needs to be taken as a result of executive session?
I move that we reappoint municipal judge, chair, and board for two-year agreement, and approve her employment agreement.
We have a motion, a second, is that your second, matching up with his motion? We have a motion, a second, to reappoint the judge to board to another two-year term, to expire April 30, 2015, and to approve an amendment, amended employment agreement. Questions or comments before we move to a vote? Roll call, please.
Stronger.
Yes.
Webb.
Yes.
Moxley.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.